All right, we'll get started here. This is the Wasika School Board Work Session for Thursday, September the 4th, 2025. It's 5:30 PM and we are in the Wasika School District Central Building, second floor conference room. And we have five items tonight and we'll turn it over to Dr. Hudson.
Well, good evening. This evening, we've got, we've got five items on the agenda. Some of them are kind of quick movers, but some of them will dig deeper into some, some work we want to get done as we start the 25, 26 school year. But to start off, we wanted to just kind of give an update on what happened this summer. We did quite a bit of programming with our kids in the buildings this summer. I'll turn it over to our secondary administrators here in just a minute to talk about what happened at the 712 level, but just a few notes. At Hartley, they did serve 75 students for the four weeks of summer school here they had in June, working on grade level standards, differentiating to meet students' needs. They did quite a bit of traveling, went to the Science Museum, went to Farm America, and did some, did some work with, with some of the perseverance and responsibility work. At WIS, they served about 45 students on a day, on a daily basis. Pretty good attendance. They went to the SPAM museum and they did some fun activities too, as well as getting students caught up and acclimated to WIS. Some of those students, incoming fourth graders, were part of the group at WIS, so they got a chance to see the building and feel what's happening there. In special education, 99 students attended extended school year from early childhood up through the junior, senior high in multiple programs. There was groups of three to six, all the way up to classes of 16 in our sessions, and 55 of those students actually utilized busing across the district. So we did transport students who needed it for those special education programs as required. So pretty busy in our buildings with particularly at the elementary level, supporting students, getting ready for the upcoming school year. Most of our summer sessions, particularly the elementary, happened in June, and some of that is to take advantage of the learning they've had throughout the school year and be able to capitalize on, on making the gains they've had. Some of that also is just when staff is available to, to provide the services. Special education goes into July. They do most of their work in July for the extended school year. That way, we can move students around to different areas and we still can get our maintenance work during the summer that they need. And then we have Justin Johnston and Mandy Nohner, our secondary administrators, and they're going to share a little bit what happened at the 712 level over the summer.
So I'll start with seventh, eighth grade. We do the seventh and eighth grade summer school at the high school. Our summer school ran Monday through Thursday, June 9th through the 26th, 11 days total, taking into account the state holiday of June 19th. We offer it to all seventh and eighth graders who have failed a core class throughout the year. So that, that number ended up being 24 eighth graders were invited and 17 seventh graders. Out of those 24 eighth graders, we had eight eighth graders who attended and seven seventh graders who chose to attend. Each morning, the students are supplied a box breakfast. Class begins at eight, finishes around 11:45. There's a four-class rotation. We have math, reading, PEG outdoor activities, and history, current events. That because of the number of people we had, we did have two primary teachers, Sam Janz and Brad Wenland, and then JJ DePa and Savion Williamson were my substitute teachers. We had a couple, every Thursday is when we do our field trips. The second Thursday was the 19th, so we didn't have one then, obviously, but the two field trips we did, we went to the Minnesota Zoo for some outdoor learning activities, as well as Minne open, State Park in Mankato. And then some of the carrots that we offer for our kids to attend that is if you're an eighth grader going into ninth grade, obviously, if you attended nine of the 11 days, which would be 90% of the time, you were given a half credit towards your high school electives. And we had five of our eight kids that met that criteria.
Yeah, you want to turn the slide, the mic over there so Mandy can, for anybody on Facebook?
We had three weeks of summer school here at Central Building, and that was for grade nine through 12. We had 73 students and 100 credits earned. And that was for Wasika and JWP, WEM, yeah. And the students were able to, we timed it so the students could get the free breakfast and the free lunch afterwards. So it went for about three hours.
If you have 73 students and 100 credits, so some students must have earned more than one credit.
They did, yep.
How do you make that work in three weeks?
So we use the credit, the true credit recovery model. So if a student earns 40% or greater, like if they earn 40%, they only have to do the 20% that they didn't master during the traditional school year, so students aren't having to start all over from scratch. No, if they didn't score 40% or higher, then they did have to start over from scratch. It gets students, it keeps them motivated to not, it keeps them motivated to keep working, keep paying attention and engaging in class, and keep doing the homework assignments and doing well on tests, because they know if they get at least 40%, they won't have to do the whole thing over again.
So lots, lots of busy stuff happening, and of course, when you're aware of community ed and all the things we have going on in our buildings as well, you drive by and all summer long, you see things happening at all the schools. So, but we wanted to give you that update here this evening and, and share kind of the things that were happening as we end, end our summer, summer school season and get into the regular school year. So any questions, anybody has for me or either Mandy or Justin?
That 40% is that 40% of the standards met or 40% in the class overall?
40% in the class overall, and then I take a look at what, why didn't they pass? Was it a certain concept or a couple concepts, and then they are assigned that specific topic to recover?
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you both, appreciate it. All right, the next item we want to talk to you about is everyone's favorite topic is school calendars. But I want to just bring to you a couple things this evening to share and get some feedback, get some thoughts on, and then depending on the discussion tonight, we'll either bring these back at the September board meeting or the October board meeting to take some action on the 2026, 27, and the 2027, 28 school calendars. We've talked in the past a little, a few times about the late Labor Day that occurs here in 2026 and 27. And in from previous conversations, we haven't really been too interested in entertaining a before Labor Day start. And so what I have prepared for us tonight is 2026, 27, and 2027, 28. What would that look like starting after Labor Day and still trying to get done right away in June? Figuring that out for you, so you can look at it. We don't have a lot of flexibility otherwise, so I just brought the one option for us to look at this evening of each, of each of the papers. And I want to get your thoughts on, once it's, give house to everybody, I'll point a couple things out to think about here for everybody. As it's coming around, you'll notice the one side is blank. It says 2025, 26, regular. Oh, looks like, okay, it looks like the staff one did not get copied on the back of the 26, 27 one, but that, that's the student calendar, that's the more important piece to start at this moment anyway. Is that, I know it's done on these copies, didn't get copied on the second half of that, so.
Both double sided.
Yeah, are they both double sided for you?
Yeah.
This may be the second.
Okay, so maybe I didn't.
Yeah, this one's, here, let's pass these back. The rest of these are. Do you have a 27, 28 that's double sided?
All right. Well, here's where you need to look at.
There you go.
So you should have a 26, 27, and 27, 28, both that are double sided. One of them has the notation that says staff on the one side, but that is mostly just for your understanding that we do, we did get the 184 contract days in both school years. But if I look at 2026, 27, and we follow the model we have, which is starting that week after Labor Day, we do our conferences the week prior, and we start on September 9th there for K-12, as we have. What you can see there is a pretty straight through calendar with, and we go right up to the 23rd of December. We do have those professional days built in, so it would be October 5th, November 2nd, December 4th, as the trimester ends. So there are some three-day weekend, weekends built in there. Martin Luther King Day on the 18th of January is that's built in as just a no student, no staff day, so that's just a straight day off for everybody. That's a three-day week. Wouldn't come back till the 4th of January, so note, note that. So you go to the 23rd of December, but don't come back till the 4th of January. The 12th and 15th of February, one of those is President's Day, one of those would be a, a professional day for our staff. And so that's a four-day week, for, weekend for students. So even though there's not a traditional spring break in this calendar, there is a couple four-day weekends built into that, built into it. Same on March 8th, that's the end of that second trimester. You'll notice the 26th is Good Friday of March, and the 29th would again be a no-stool school day to give students and families a four-day weekend there at the end of March as well. And there is one in April as well, based on the professional day and a day that we, we have to give teachers off because of conference nights, is when that other school day comes into play there. And then we run through, we're still getting done on the 4th of June. So based on a September 9th start, a June 4 finish is still pretty solid in terms of not getting late into the month of June. Staff doesn't have much for breaks. I have, because the 12, 15, the 9, 12, those, I'm sorry, February 12th and 15th, April 9th and 12th, those are staff days. They just wouldn't be, wouldn't be student contact days for that. That being said, I have talked to principals, and they did say, you know, for some of those staff workshop days, if there's ways we can work flexibly with staff so that they can do those hours a different day, do something remotely, if we can, we can provide some flexibility on some of those days if we need to. But we'll work through that when it comes, when it gets to that point. So there's, unless we want to move before Labor Day, or we want to go later into June, that's kind of the model that fits all the number of days we have to get. It still gets us to 168 days for our seventh through 11th graders. Reminder, 165 is the minimum, or sorry, yeah, is the minimum, and then 166 for our K6 days when it comes to that, that model there. We certainly could, the only way to add in our student contact day and stay within our staff days would be to reuse another professional day, which I'd prefer not to do, but that'll be an option there. Any questions on that? I feel like it, as I was putting it together, all of a sudden, there were two Mondays in a row. I thought, let's make that a Friday, Monday, as opposed to two Mondays in a row, and let's, let's give a four-day weekend here and there for kids to be able to build into that. Very similar model, what you'll see on 27, 28, a little bit more flexibility in the end date, just because, you know, it's a leap year, so 2028 is a leap year. And so we end up with the 29th of February giving us an extra school day there. Otherwise, the model remains pretty similar. There is an, in April of 2028, you'll notice that we package the April comp day, professional day, all around Good Friday. So for families, in April of 28, they'd have the five-day weekend around the Easter holiday that particular year. And then February, and then June 2 would be the last day that year, so it moves up a little bit earlier based on the years we have. So, and then if, just for note, on all of these models, staff does come back the Monday after we get out, and they would report, you know, the week before we'd start and do a similar model to what we've done in years past. And in both of these models, based on leave time, based on supporting flexibility with teachers, even though it's a little bit of go-go-go, this is still the preferred model to go in later to June, I would think. So. There is legislation in place that we have, you know, like I said, we have not talked about starting earlier with any kind of big discussion here in Wasika. There is legislation in place that for these two school years, because of the late Labor Day, districts are allowed to start before Labor Day if they wanted to. And so if, if you're thinking about it and having conversations and want me to mock up something like that, what it, what it probably means is, it would mean moving everything up a week and getting done the end of May, or adding a longer break somewhere in the year. But this fits all of our day requirements that we have without changing any of our, our start day models. So, the four-day weekends make me feel a lot better about the late start, early finish piece with it. And I guess on the 27, 28, you'll notice just the leap, the 29th of February got us back to 167 K6 days, 169, 7 through 11. So we, which is what we're doing right now, 25, 26 has 169 and 167. So, I would entertain any questions you have about that right now, otherwise, it's just something to ponder. I mean, in past, we've done some surveys, we've gotten some feedback, we've asked our staff, the community, some questions about calendars. There's just not a lot of flexibility in these two years, and so I would recommend we, we move forward with making a decision here in the next month or two.
Any questions, comments?
What's the minimum days for staff?
The 184-day contract they have, yep. And that's based on their contract. There's no statute around it, it's just what they have in their, in their contract. And within that contract, there's a minimum number of days that have to be workshop days and professional development, and we, we meet or exceed all that with everything, so.
How many days, how many days, snow days do you have figured in here? Or are they all?
Well, when you get lower than 165.
So anything more than that?
Yeah, and what we, what we, the current law allows is up to five days of that e-learning. And so really, in 167-day years, what we have this year, we would have two snow days that we wouldn't have to make up or do anything with. And then beyond that, we'd have to do e-learning days up to, you could do up to five days of that based on weather, and then after that, you'd have to talk about making up days, then go from there. You know, if you end up with something, something larger. What we did a few years ago, yeah, boy, it was two or three winters ago, is rather than go deeper into e-learning, we just made a professional day, a student contact day in April or May. So if we end up getting into June or to January or February and have a really tough winter, we'll end up just adding a student contact day in lieu of a workshop day later in the school year and make it up that way, because e-learning is a, not a super productive way to, to do any instruction, I think we know that, so we try to avoid that as best we can. These two years put us in a little bit of a squeeze, so we might have to use that if we got to that point.
Did you say there were two school, or snow days?
In this particular, the 26, 27 goes down one, so it's only one in that one, because that's why it's a little tighter.
One on 26, 27, one on 27, two on 27, 28.
Back to two. Yeah, sorry, it's two, one, two. Two this year would be one and two. Right, and that's only because we have that little tighter schedule. But with those four-day weekends built in, we do have some flexibility to add a day if we needed to for student contact, that our staff's already required to be here if we run into a tough winter, one of those years. The last couple of years, we haven't had very many straight-out cancellations, so you never know what is in store based on the ebb and flow of things, but we obviously try to keep kids here whenever we can.
And I think you said, but the staff reception on this was between acceptable and positive, or I mean, they?
Well, I have, we have, they haven't seen this version of it yet, because it's just the flexibility is what it is.
There's not a whole lot of choices.
What I, what I have asked was, I asked the principals, are you willing to work with your staff? If on one of these four-day weekends, they want to make it a three-day weekend because they got some family thing going on, and make up the time or use a personal day or do something like that, and they said, yeah, we can work with that. And that's just, so it's kind of ahead of time with, with everything. We already have in the contract that on those, the ones that fall at the end of the trimesters, you know, they can do that work from home if they'd like, and there's some flexibility when they can use leave. So it's, it's not ideal in terms of giving a teacher break, but it is the calendar that's in front of us. Yeah.
We get paid for, by day, for everyone that students are here, right?
You get, you get paid for the school year.
For the school.
And you get docked if you're less than the minimum.
Is there a max? That, where you probably got money on?
No.
Okay.
No. No, the max would be just whatever your, your teacher contract day minus the days they have to have for workshop and those kind of things, so.
Oh yeah, I'm not talking to teachers necessarily.
Yeah, there's no finance, there's no financial incentive to going extra.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, other than of course, summer work, we do get some, we do get some funding for summer learning and those kind of things. Okay? Very good. All right. Next thing I wanted to cover is just a real brief, quick hitter on the Southwest Metro process. I did talk to the superintendent of Southwest Metro, probably a week since our last workshop, since our last meeting, and I just wanted to update you a little bit on the process that as we've looked through that building process, and I've, I've shared my concerns about not wanting to necessarily be part owner of another building and working through some of that sort of thing, and they've worked it out with their attorneys on their process line, and the joint, essentially, a joint powers agreement is not going to be an option for this particular site right now, which is a good thing in the sense that we don't then own a part of another building from a district. So if this plan proceeds forward, what the model would be is the Southwest Metro would just buy the building. They would choose to purchase the building, and they would choose to then, the rate that it would cost members to attend would be basically what we looked at before, and they would choose to, to, to charge that amount. A couple things have to happen before we get to that place. First things first is, now that means that the, Southwest Metro is a little bit of interesting unit in the sense that they have 11 member districts, that's their core member districts, and each one of them has one of their board members as the Southwest Metro board. So Dr. Horton, the superintendent up there, works with an 11-person board as he's working with his decisions through Southwest Metro. That board now would then have to approve the purchase of this building as part of the Southwest Metro asset, you know, collection. The four of us who are associate members and don't sit on the board, essentially are more just users of the, of the service, we would still basically pay for this building. What they would do is they would, they would have to work out an agreement where each of the air districts pays like a dollar or something, so they're, they're part of the deal for the funding of the building, because they have to as a member district. Still getting the details on that, but the, we, it wouldn't change what we're paying, put it that way, significantly. What it does allow us to do is essentially decide if we want to use that as our setting for service or not, and then that's the cost of serving our students at that particular facility, or we look at other options which have other implications right through the process. The part that is, two things are a little bit unknown yet, and the one is that if, you know, Southwest Metro, if they were to purchase this building and not have the support of the districts who are going to be the primary users of the district, that puts them at risk of how they're going to raise the revenue then to pay for that purchase. And so what, what we as a school district would, I would like us to communicate probably in the next 60 days to them is that, yeah, we probably would continue using Southwest Metro as our setting for services, or we would look at something else, so that they can make a decision based on what they know. If we decide that we're not going to head that direction, they may decide then not to head that direction, because that revenue then isn't guaranteed for them. Or they may decide to do anyway, we talked about that last time, and then we have to make that decision from there. I do meet with superintendents from JDVP, New Richland, and WEM tomorrow. We have our monthly standing meeting, so this will be part of the conversation, so I'll get a chance to see what, what their districts are thinking. And then on Monday, there's a meeting with Southwest Metro where they have some more information to share with me about how they're going to use the facility. So I'll be able to give you some more information again, even as early as next week's update for that. But I did want to share with that, share that with you, because as of our last work session in August, I had mentioned, waiting for that JPA was the next big piece for us to see what was actually going to be in the agreement. And now that we know that's not going to be part of the process, it's just going to be, here's the fee if we use that service. That makes our life a little cleaner. We still have a decision to make at some point, and what Sarah and I, with Jeff Wagner's help, will in the next few weeks is start doing some numbers on, or looking around what would be the option, one way or the other. There's not a lot of local options. Running the service ourselves is a, would be a rarity for a district our size. From Oatana to Albert Lee to Fairbo, the only district, so I'm thinking about the bigger districts around us, you know, St. Peter, Fairmont, New Ulm, none of them run their own setting for services, Mankato does. So that's the size that we, that districts kind of have to be to run their own service. So we'd be looking at probably pursuing some, some service somewhere, if we, even if we chose not, if we chose not to go this direction. So, so for now, it's got a little bit of a, hey, here's just the update, not really looking for any more response at this moment, other than keeping you in the loop on what I know as it evolves over the next few, next few weeks. And then when decision time comes, I will make sure I give you enough time so that we, I'm not going to come to a meeting and just say, hey, by the way, you should decide this tonight, because I want to make sure you have time to think about what we're, what we're doing with those students. Questions or thoughts on that?
So you'll be running numbers to see which is more cost-effective for the district?
Well, yes, I'll do that. I will do that. I mean, there's, part of the challenge is that even if it's more cost-effective, it might be awfully hard.
Yes, there are still other aspects, but just to see that difference can help.
Yeah, we'll do that too. Yeah. Okay, very good. All right, moving along. Efficient meeting tonight, this is good. So after our last, our last superintendent evaluation committee meeting, we did talk about performance goals for me in this 2025, 26 academic year, using a similar model that we have had in the past, working on setting a series of goals, but then also in a larger picture, but then also how we're measuring and providing evidence of that performance throughout the course of the school year. And pardon me, I looked, had a chance to look at this with the committee here a couple weeks ago, and wanted to share that with you tonight. Again, it's a work session, so whatever feedback you may have this evening, we'll take back and we'll bring it to you in September for consideration and approval. So using a similar model, we had a conversation around what could academic achievement look like as far as the goals, and you know, what the superintendent's role really is, is implementing that strategic plan and emphasizing some academic success working through that. So I kind of decided, worked on this in, in really three different areas. Strategic process, working towards the district priority areas, student success, improve the student learning outcomes aligned with the vision card measures, as we talked about, and then future readiness, and increasingly preparing students for post-secondary education as reflected in the vision card. So from a strategic plan implementation and academic achievement perspective, I want to make sure we're hitting, you know, not only we're doing the strategic plan and, and following that vision card goals, but we're seeing student success, and we're seeing students ready for the future based on their goals. As we looked at the vision card last time, as you'll recall, we upped our, my expectations of my goals a little bit for our reading measures and our graduations measures, and so those will be part of this, as part of the vision card measures, looking towards that increased rigor and success for our students. And at the last, at our, our DAC meeting here, we'll come in September, but in our, in our last data dive meeting, I'm, we're seeing some positive, really positive things out of what our students are doing right now, so that's, that's great to see. The second goal, community engagement, is one that we've done, we've done every year since, since I've been in this role, but I, and I, so I tweaked the language just a little bit to prioritize a little bit what we're looking at. So it's not just about getting out and engaging with the community, because after, you know, starting school year number six, there's, there's a lot of community relationships, you know, a lot of, a lot of folks, what's going on, but it's, but, but it's really about making sure that we're fostering those partnerships and that community, community connection, not just, you know, being around, and so really connecting those sort of things. So, so maintain the transparent updates to the school board. We'll look at the three-year board agenda here in just a few minutes, but really engaging that with you and how you work through that process. The listing sessions are already on the calendar for this fall at the buildings for me, which is, and those will happen in October. It's great to see what staff is thinking for that regard. And then I think one of the things that we had, I've been thinking about, is it something I can continue to do better, is continue to engage with all of you in some of those community events. So when can you be at this luncheon? When can you be at this particular activity? And it'll work more for some than others, based on just how life works, but I can, I can increase probably my ability to invite and engage you more in some of those community activities, based on what we've talked about. The last two are more of the operations goals. Neither of one of them will probably be surprising to you, but continue to work on a long-term facility plan ensures the effectiveness and efficient operations. I think we've made some great strides in the last, in the last, you know, several years, but particularly the last six to eight months, in working through where we want to take our, our information gathering process and what we talked about with the committee on what our next steps are for facilities. You know, I think probably two years ago, I was thinking about Hartley, but at this point, through our work together, I'm really expanding it to the whole district, and what are we thinking about what's next? And that's building, putting together that plan, and of course, recommending and supporting the school board in whatever. building putting together that plan and of course recommending and supporting the school board in whatever whatever plan that that comes out to be. And then goal number four is is one that was on, I think it was on two or three years ago when we were working through some rightsizing and I put it back on again for this coming year because with some of the unknowns we have with with finances based on how our legislature and the federal government is working, I want to make sure that we we maintain our fiscal our fiscal viability like we have right now. And Sarah and her team is doing great work. It's really easy when I work with such a great teammate on this particular process, but really developing that that long-range financial plan as we have in the past, and it tweaks every year, you know how that goes. But providing leadership, you know, one of the things that every fall, every fall, you notice that you've put a plan in place and your budget is in place, just like our our own personal budgets, right? And then something else happens. And then this comes up and then I just need a little bit more for this. And that's all very reasonable, but my job along with Sarah's support is to make sure that we stay within the parameters that we set forth for 25-26. And I think this is a really important year to to make sure we're focusing on that because of some of the unknowns we have with staffing, with negotiations, with, you know, some of that that kind of things we're working through right now. So I'm feeling positive with that area, but I had it on here. And then we just want to make sure again, working with with Sarah and and others on the team, principals and other leadership team members on what's that long-range financial strategy because it's one of the things that you'll notice school districts do is is we will add they'll add programming, they'll add staff, and then after so many years, then you have to make a reduction. And then they'll add and they have to make a reduction. And there's this cycle of of sometimes discouragement that you can fall into in a school district of me having got it this last spring from staff saying, well, are we going to be doing cuts? Am I going to reading this on the news? I'm hearing this all around. And we've set ourselves up in such a situation where we we're doing okay. We're not, we don't have excess dollars to do excess things, but we're living within our means of the best of our ability. And I I pride myself and our team on that. And that's what I want to continue going forward. So I think for 2025-26, that would be what I would suggest being the goals that I work on. We talked about these a little bit in committee, like I mentioned, and and this seemed to be something the committee felt okay with as well. So I'd entertain any more of your thoughts before we we consider bringing them to September for approval.
Any thoughts, comments?
I'll just comment. I I like them. I think it hits the important points of academics, of community engagement, facilities and finances are, I mean, I like them. I think they're well laid out.
Thank you. All right.
Okay, I guess.
Okay, all right. Last item tonight is the school board goals and the work plan, something that we had slated for our for our August retreat and then we just ran out of time. So I wanted to share these with you here again this evening and get your feedback as we move into this next school year. So just like we talked about superintendent goals, less just like we talked about superintendent goals, we also talk about what's the what's the school board's role? So we have a strategic plan. We have our vision cards. We have our operational plan. And we're working towards these district priorities. And and as a as a governance entity, you know, what is the school board's role in keeping the district on track? And it's the easy MSBA model, right, is your your number one priority is keeping me in line and supervising the superintendent, right? But but at the same time, there's lots of of the work that you're doing throughout the course of the process to engage in our in our area. And so I think about the key roles of a school board, district district policy, operations oversight, board operations, superintendent relationships and public engagement. We've created this work plan for things that you can work on as a school board over the course of the la of, you know, the next several years. And when I looked at the 2024-25 year that we just completed and I looked through what we were working on in terms of what we said we were going to do. You know, board meeting agendas aligned to board policy, doing our policy review, but working on our facility needs and operating budget needs in board operations, the school board election and phase training and those sorts of things, doing my evaluation. I think we did a pretty nice job with what we were expecting from ourselves in 2024-25. So there wasn't anything on there that I would say really we we didn't intentionally, you know, take a look at. And so what I when I but when I look at 2025-26, this is really, I'm going to open this up for discussion here in just a minute, but I want to share with you just a couple of thoughts. You know, I think like we talked about just a few minutes ago with my goals, I think, how are we going to really scope, you know, create our scope around facility needs? What are we going to do? I think that's a 25-26 work for the board to really wrap their head around what are we going to do with facilities? And there won't necessarily be action taking. We may not do the thing in 25-26, but I want to focus on, you know, how are we going to make this work? I think that would be a potential, a good thing for the board to set as a as a goal and as a as a work plan for this particular year. Contract negotiations from the middle of we're actually coming towards the back end of which is which is nice. Facility audit may or not still be still be relevant when I drafted this six weeks ago, now that we we're almost at the end of it. We don't know if we need to have that on there or not, but what do we do with it? Could be something we leave on there in your committee assignments. I put under board, I'm just going to run through them all and then open up for discussion there if that's okay, Dave. Annual board evaluation, you know, we have done that in the past where we've sent it out. We've we've got feedback from each other and how we've done our goals and it's been something we've done from time to time. We haven't had done a real formal process with that in recent years. MSBA does offer to come down for a couple of meetings and do walk you through a little bit of a board self-evaluation. That could be something we could consider. It might be helpful for us. It doesn't have to be the end of the year. It could be this fall at a work session coming up this fall. Just to get a sense of, you know, how do we think we're we're doing as a board? It might be something that's worth the conversation. Only because we've done it pretty informally the last few years. So I thought maybe it's something we want to consider. When I talked about phase training, it actually goes with phase training and a winter conference in the sense of you know, we might want to talk about a little bit about what is our board committed to? Do we want to? Do we want to say that within the, you know, within a term, you get through all the phases phases if you can? Do you want to say we're going to try to make up as many of us as possible getting to the winter conference? Or is that something it's just nice to get to if you can? It's one of those things where I kind of say if if as a board, we think it's nice to get to if we can, then it probably shouldn't be on this list. That's and that's that's what I'm getting at. I'm not just saying that it is or is or isn't the answer, but we don't need to have it on here if we're not going to measure it as a hey, let's try to get there. Same thing with the superintendent relationships. I put the weekly update on there because I think that's work that that's board work plan of is making sure that you and we do a great job with that. So it's actually an easy one. Of making sure you're reviewing and reading that and asking questions as you as you need to and working through it. And then with public engagement, you know, I was looking at some of these and our meetings around Facebook, social media website to highlight the district. So and the thank you cards are both one of those things that were were kind of a they were they were a good idea. We were going to do this. We didn't haven't done a lot from it from the board lens. You know, we we do our monthly recognitions. We say who we talk who we're going to recognize. When we think of it and when we're able to, I know we do pass those along on our social media, but it's not something necessarily that the board has driven. And so is that something that you want to continue to drive? Or is that something like, okay, for at least use social media? That's more of a directive to the administration to make sure we're doing that as opposed to the board being involved in that. And then thank you cards. If we're not, if we don't want to do that, then we're not going to physically do that, then we should just not have that at the on the meeting. That's why I highlighted the board member recognition celebration. Maybe that covers that. And we don't need to have both of them on here. And then this is me just throwing it out there. I would I've been doing the coffee with the superintendent now for a number of years. And we're going to do that with buildings a little bit this year, too. I would love to expand that and call that with maybe a board member joins me each month at those things too. So and then essentially the next 26, 27, 27, 28 are kind of taking some of those things and going on. So Dave, I'd hand it to you to kind of have some discussion on some of these things. I'll take notes and kind of just see what we're thinking. And then again, this would be something we'd bring back at a regular meeting to formally adopt. But those are kind of the thoughts I was thinking of as I reviewed the last year.
Okay, all right. Comments?
Well, I would say on public engagement, we got you got the board member recognitions on, excuse me, the table at the fair. I think we could up our game on that. We could, we could be, we we need more input. We need more input from from other people in the school district, you know, what can we do? What can we do to increase to increase our presence at the fair? I think that would be a great place to start.
Okay. So leave that on there as yeah.
Yeah, leave it on. And I would I would, you know, like to really highlight that a little bit more because that's the one place, that's the one place that we have a lot of, we had, there's a lot of contacts that can be made there, you know. You know, so I don't know. I don't know. I don't know what it is, but I know some of our banners are 10, 15 years old already. You know, so
Yep.
So I would, I would like to see us, you know, up our game and up our game at the county fair. That would be of public engagement.
Good.
I agree with that. And I'm thinking maybe we need to get started on that earlier instead of, oh, my gosh, the fair is in two weeks.
Yeah. So I'm going to push back a little bit. We as in me, right? That's what you're getting at here?
No, Eric, I think I think people would be willing to help with that.
Because this is on the board goals, right? And so, yeah.
We just need direction to like create.
For you, this is for board.
Yeah. Well, you know what, but you know, you don't want to mask it. Oh, red, no, but no, but that's no, I agree with you. I think that's just fine. But my point is, Dave.
Somebody has to have it.
We have not been last meeting in from a district perspective. Yeah, but it just gets to be your, our engagement has been falling in the last few years. And so I think you're right on that we need, we can refresh that a little bit.
Well, I think our engagement is okay at the fair, but I I agree with Charlie. I think it could be better.
Right. Well, and let me define that. Preparation for the event. It has not something we've been focusing on a whole lot the last few years and we can do better with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Who does that? Like, who does all the setup? Okay, so it's on you. So you, we just need to talk to you about helping you and seeing what you need. Okay.
Yep, yeah. We've already, we've already bought some stuff. We've already got some more swag stuff. We've the feedback in July was the same. It's not, I'm not surprised by the comment. So we're we're got, we've got some things in the works. Yeah, that's good.
Two part, that's your help in the preparation and then it's our commitment to being there and our presence.
So how do we involve staff? Involve staff in this process or involve students in it? You know, that would be you know, it could be made into a learning exercise of sorts, you know.
Sure.
Some student engagement, art people or whatever, you know, so.
Sure. Good. Other thoughts?
Has everyone been to the winter conference and is it beneficial?
I think it was.
I went to it my very first year and I think it would be more beneficial going after you because it was like, I think I had been to, I don't even think I'd been to a meeting yet, maybe one meeting. So
Right, right.
Yeah, so I think it would be better after. So like for you this January, but this last January, I don't think you would have got as much out of it.
Okay.
I can see that.
I've oh, I've been a few times and I've always really liked it because it immerses you in a lot of the school and education related things. It's a great chance to talk to see what other districts do because a lot of things you hear about, well, this district did that and that and be able to pull that. I've also heard of plenty of districts who a good portion of their board goes and it's a great time to talk amongst us. While open meeting law says we can't talk about school business, we can talk about education. We can talk about what our district things, what we do and it's great from that as well. So I'd be a strong proponent of trying to encourage as many as we can. Of course, we all have individual situations, but even it, there's a Thursday and then some of Friday, even if it's just the Thursday, trying to get as much as as many of us as we can, I think is very would be very a good thing.
Yeah, I've used it in the past as kind of a a mid-year update to when you've kind of got everybody together and you're offsite for a little bit of time and we'll post it on our website that we're meeting. So if they want to come and watch, they can. And so I can do that for everything too. But no, it's a I I think the sessions can be beneficial and they oftentimes they are, but sometimes they can be a little bit. I think they've crossed the line between governance and management in some places where they get into some stuff that probably isn't something you're thinking about on a daily basis as a board member, but it's good to know about and good to be informed on and have part of the conversation. So I've never seen anything that wasn't in some value. But I think just the time, granted, that's a good point, just the time to be on other board members and see how it works is helpful too, if you can make it work. Yeah.
I just wish they wouldn't have it in the dead of winter. I really do. I think if they had it in the fall or the spring where the weather is most likely going to be better. The days are longer, temperatures warmer. I just.
Yeah.
It never fails. It usually snows during that.
You either get a snowstorm or it's bitterly cold or, you know.
Well, my and my would, I would just say my observation in Wasika in the last several years is that it, we have started oftentimes with the best of intentions and then stuff comes up because it's January. And so I think that we we can set our goal to be there, but then we recognize that life happens and then it gets to be.
Well, especially because I know, you know, half the people that that attend this are from the metropolitan area, so they don't have that far to go. But if you are from outstate Minnesota, and I mean, actually, we're fairly close to the Twin Cities compared with a lot of other school districts. So.
Yeah.
Yeah. I guess for us, maybe if we as a board are committed, you know, I I think I put it in my calendar already because I plan to want to go. It's something we plan ahead from now, not think about in December because it's hard in December to decide.
All right. Any other thoughts, comments?
So the thank you cards are new to me also. Are those, those would be from us to staff that have been recognized for something?
So that was the intent. The intent was as we recognized people at our monthly meetings, we would take the time to just write a thank you note to those folks who were recognized times times that. And I will tell you that for a while it got, it was pretty good. I think a couple of different board members would send us the like a little Facebook, social media post afterwards. And then Amy would share that we get it on our Facebook posts that way. I don't know that we ever did any handwritten cards along those lines, but we have tried to, I have tried to take notes during the meeting sometime. It's hard to keep to keep jotting around with that. You know, I it's the social media shout out, I would say that almost every time I posted a social media post about it, someone had to add a comment about somebody else that we forgot to recognize in that particular meeting. And so I kind of missed the point of what we're trying to do with that. So.
I kind of wish we could find a better way to after the the meeting is over, when we do the recognitions, you know, I'm I'm going to guess a lot of the people or the staff or whoever that get recognized, they never know they were recognized.
Right. And that's that. And that's what we talked about, kind of what's our, what's our follow up with that and, you know? I mean, one thing we could do is we, and I just thought of this right now, and you could tell me it's a silly idea. We could just do a postcard or something with with your names and the school board photo or something on it. And then after that, we could Amy could send that out to staff or or students who are recognized or whatever. You guys go all sign it that night or something and we could do something like that. It feels a little more template, but it could be more manageable.
You got a shout out.
You know? Yeah.
Or we can just give them a blue jay buck.
Good.
Just gets hard to create a post.
Right.
I mean, everybody's busy by the time we're work all day and you're at this meeting and you go home and you have family stuff. It
For sure.
Gets forgot about. So there's just a lot there, but it is nice to give that recognition because like Dave said, a lot of these people don't even know that we acknowledged
Yeah.
what they've done.
Well, maybe maybe we'll we'll work on that. We'll see if we can do something like that. That's maybe a little more prepackaged in some ways and then you can if you think that's what we want to think about. Easy enough to do.
I would, yeah, I think that would be.
Easier.
It's got to be manageable and and sustainable.
Correct. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, that's why my monthly weekly shut up, my weekly shout outs are audio and not video. Hopefully I could sustain that.
All right.
What other thoughts you have? Anything else?
Yeah. Any other thoughts?
What about the, only because it would involve some scheduling if it's something you're interested in. Is there any interest in the board evaluation process, do you think? Of having MSBA do a session with us on?
Well.
Looking at ourselves as a board?
I'm, I'm to the point where I think it would be nice to have MSBA come in and do more of a, I don't know, call somewhat a formal board evaluation with us.
Yeah. I don't see any.
And it doesn't, it doesn't have to be MSBA. It could be somebody else.
I think we've done it too in the past. And I think it was very eye opening. And, and you learn something as a board about, oh, I didn't think of that or, or, oh yeah, we are doing that and we're doing well at it. So I, I think it is beneficial.
And that's a service that we get for being a member.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you know who might come from MSBA to do something like that?
Gail Gilman is usually who runs those with them.
She's pretty good.
Yes. She does a lot of their strategic planning and she does that. And I'm not seeing any like glaring reason why we were missing anything. It just would be, we haven't done it a couple of years. So maybe something to consider this particular year.
But if it helps us as members understand better or, or get, you know, if we each gain one tidbit out of it, that's worth.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Okay. I'll connect with, with you on that, Dave, and we can connect with Gail and work from there. Okay.
All right. Anything else? No?
Not for me.
Okay. I guess we're done. And our next meeting is in two weeks.
September 18th and yeah, it's been a great start to the school year. I would say yesterday and today went, went as smooth as the start of the school year ever does. And had always have some hiccups here and there, but positive, positive start to the year so far. So it's been really good.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks.